Call the meeting to order. Good evening, Lake Forest, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Attorney General Mayor Lansing?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Romo?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Moreno is on her way. Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is reports of the city officers, starting with the mayor. And it's my great pleasure tonight to read the following resolution. This doesn't happen very often in Lake Forest. Resolution in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the School of St. Mary. Whereas the clergy, faculty, and families of the School of St. Mary are celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Roman Catholic School in 2017, and whereas since establishment of the Roman Catholic School in 1917, the clergy and faculty have contributed substantially to the spiritual and high-quality education provided by the School of St. Mary, and whereas the School of St. Mary has always been an integral part of the community by its faith and ecumenical spirit and high-quality education. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the City Council on behalf of all the residents of the community hereby congratulates and extends all good wishes to the clergy, faculty, and families of the School of St. Mary on the joyful occasion of the 100th anniversary of the founding of the Roman Catholic School. And be it further resolved that the City Council offers its sincere appreciation and gratitude to the Church of St. Mary for the years of service to the children of Lake Forest through the High Quality Elementary Education Program, and asks that a copy of this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the School of St. Mary with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the September 5th, 2017 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Signed, RTE Lansing. Mayor. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So I now invite David Weeters, Principal of the School, to come forward and accept this.
David, are there others in the audience that want to come up and be in the picture? I don't want to leave anybody out. You don't want to mess with the Catholic.
Okay. Whereas National Voter Registration Day is a national holiday celebrating our democracy, first observed in 2012 and growing in popularity every year since, held on the 4th Tuesday of September, National Voter Registration Day will be observed on Tuesday, September the 26th of this year. Whereas the holiday has been endorsed by the National Association of Secretaries of State and is further supported by the National Association of State Election Directors, and whereas every year millions of Americans find themselves unable to vote because they miss a registration deadline, don't update their registration, or aren't sure how to register, and whereas National Voter Registration Day seeks to create a broad awareness of voter registration and encourages everyone to exercise the opportunity to vote whereby in Tuesday, September the 26th, volunteers and organizations from all over the country will, in a single day of coordinated field technology and media efforts, hit the streets. Whereas National Voter Registration Day involves volunteers in their community or workplace, at schools or public events, or anywhere people can register to vote, technology to help voters find registration drives nearby and register to vote online, local organizations, businesses, and election offices engaged in their own communities, tens of thousands of voters registering to vote online and offline in a single day. Whereas National Voter Registration Day will accomplish registering voters. In 2016, over 750,000 voters used National Voter Registration Day to register to vote across all the 50 states. Mobilizing volunteers. Each year, the holiday's growing number of local partners engage upwards of 10,000 local volunteers. Educating voters. Millions of voters need to register and re-register every year. By utilizing new technology and leveraging partners, Americans in all 50 states will be educated about how to register, sign up for election reminders, check their registration online, and get mail ballots, learn about early voting, and more. National Voter Registration is a day of civic unity. It's an opportunity to set aside differences and celebrate democracy and the rights and opportunities we all share as Americans. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and City Council of the City of Lake Forest, County of Lake, State of Illinois, hereby acknowledge National Voter Registration Day. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest Lake Bluff area as a symbol of our respect and esteem, with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the September 5th, 2017 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I believe we have a representative from the League of Women Voters to come forward.
When were you going to make some comments? When? Did you want to make?
Do you want to make some comments?
Those are always good comments.
Okay. Next is a report on vote by mail options to be presented by Margaret Boyer, City Clerk of the City of Lake Forest.
Ta-da.
You're over there. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, what a great opportunity for...
Hey, Biddy, pull the microphone. Thank you.
For us to follow the City Council's support of National Voters Registration Day and talk about options that all Lake County voters have to cast their ballots. Before I kind of get into those options, I actually want to talk to you about a little bit of data. So in 2010, the census says that 19,375 residents live in Lake Forest, of which 15,026 are registered voters, which is a phenomenal number for this community. As you can see, we've broken down each election by votes by mail and the percentage that is Lake Forest voters. And if you focus on the general election in 2016, almost 12% of registered Lake Forest voters voted by mail. So that's just specific to Lake Forest, while overall in the county, 40% of the Lake County voters either voted by mail or voted early in 2016, which I kind of thought was interesting as far as the votes go. There are two elections coming up in 2018, and for anybody who is not currently enrolled in any of the programs that the Lake County Clerk's Office offers, there's plenty of time because they're not until March and November of 2018. There are three programs that automatically generate a request form. Each of these can be made electronically without voter's signature or with a voter's signature. I have the electronic forms and the paper forms at the back of the room for you if you'd like, you know, if you'd want to go ahead and turn those in. If you decide to put your request in electronically, keep in mind that by state law, your email address is made available to political parties and campaigns. So if you don't want to share your email address, print it out and mail it in to the Lake County Clerk's Office. So let's talk about the three options that are available. The first is the Snowbird program, and that's available to those of you who vacation outside your precinct during voting time. The next is a student program, which is great for kids going off to school who still want to cast that vote matters, every vote matters, and it allows them to get their ballot at their college. This is a two-year program, and the county checks on this every two years to make sure that the students are still enrolled at that college. And the third program is a permanent opt-in program for voting by mail, and this program intends for anybody to receive an application for a ballot at your mail, at your address that you've elected on your form, and for the elections that you've elected on your form. So it's this program, when, once you enroll in this permanent vote by mail, it's permanent until you choose to opt out or your voter registration becomes inactive or you move outside of Lake County. It's important to note that by enrolling in this program, volunteers, or I'm sorry, voters, help the Lake County Clerk's Office gauge the number of voters who choose to vote by mail, and then they're printing less ballots for the polling places, whether it be on early voting or for on Election Day. There, I'm sure that anybody who has any questions, our, the city's website will have a link that goes back, but in the meantime, there is a webpage called lakevoterpower.info, which is a one-click resource to districts, elected officials, voting options, voting sites, and ballot information. Lake County Clerk's Office does an amazing job putting out information. They answer 99% of your questions online, and they answer the phone when you call. Their telephone number is also available on our website. The second option is an email address, and that is votingbymail@lakecountyil.gov. And the third is to, you can either come here to visit City Hall, you can come in and stop in and ask us, you can call us, or you can check out the city's website where we will have a link to the Lake County Voter Page, which is just an immense amount of information. Any questions?
Biddy, I have a question.
Okay.
Can you go back to the original data slide?
Sure.
Please? And when, this may also be directed at you, but we have roughly about 15,000 registered voters, about 11% voted by mail. I don't know what the total turnout was in, for the general election in 2016, but I guess the question would be encouraging people to vote by mail really is a matter of convenience and hope that if it's more convenient, then more people will vote. But I guess the question is, what can the city and the league do to try and increase voter participation in particularly general election, but also, you know, primary and consolidate elections as well?
Well, I think that this, by following the county's lead and having the information readily available on our website, because that really seems to be the way everybody is going, is electronic, and they don't want to have to go to the polls, they want to have that email reminder and the mail reminder that your ballot is coming and to come in and vote. So we, as a city, what's different about this presentation that is different than the presentations we've done in the past is we've actually included the form in the City Council packet, and it's also, like I said, available at the back of the room.
Biddy, one question.
Certainly.
For a number of our viewers. If you were a fully registered voter today, right now, is there anything you have to do pursuant to this discussion you're leading today? I think the answer is no. You don't have to do anything, correct?
You don't if you want to have to walk into a poll to vote. If you want to vote by mail, then you need to...
Right.
Go online.
Yeah, I just want to be crystal clear for people.
But no, otherwise you don't need to do anything.
Or you can do early voting as well, always.
You can always do early voting also.
You can do early or regular voting.
You can vote, as the county says, you can, your couch potato voting. You can vote from your couch.
There you go. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is to, next item of business is to swear in firefighter/paramedic Stephen K. Wurcheck.
Mayor Lansing, members of council, guests in the audience tonight, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to acknowledge the accomplishments of some of our members here. We have two members here tonight. Steve's going to be the first one to be sworn in. Steve came to us back in October of 2015 as a paid-on-premise or part-time firefighter, and then he was quickly hired in January. Typically, our probation lasts one year. Due to scheduling, Steve had to go to paramedic school to finish his probation, and he just finished and successfully passed the state paramedic test back in August. So we missed a meeting here, only one meeting in August, but we're glad to have him here. I'd also point out that Steve is an active member of the Air Force Reserve, and unfortunately, we're going to be losing him for a little bit for a deployment here shortly, but we're very proud of his service to the Air Force. We're very proud of what he's done with us, with Lake Forest, and happy for the years to come of service to the city.
Terrific.
Wife Tara Lim's here to pin his badge on.
Come forward, too. You're part of this. Okay. Could you raise your right hand, please? I, Stephen K. Wurcheck.
I, Stephen K. Wurcheck.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the City of Lake Forest.
And the ordinance and rules and regulations of the City of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties...
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
...of the position of firefighter/paramedic to the best of my ability.
Of the position of firefighter/paramedic to the best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
And work to fulfill the vision to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Lot of work done. We are swearing in firefighter/paramedic James V. Gluth.
Yes, James came to us back in July of last year, and he was already a firefighter from another state, and he had his paramedic certification. We just had to get him crossed into the State of Illinois, and he just passed the test to become a firefighter basic, which is what we require to be off our probation. Just, when was that, James? The 26th?
Yep.
So made a special call down to the state, made sure, kind of on the border here of getting him into the meeting, but I had all the confidence that he was going to pass it. James is just another one of our really bright, young firefighter/paramedics that we have on the force, and his parents are here to pin his badge, and it'd be great if he could swear him in.
Terrific. Terrific. Well, come forward. Come forward to all of the departments. Come here, come on up. Could you raise your right hand, please? I, James V. Gluth.
I, James V. Gluth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the City of Lake Forest.
And the ordinance, rules, and regulations of the City of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of firefighter/paramedic.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
Further upholds...
Swear to uphold.
Swear to uphold the duties...
The mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
...the mission.
And work to fulfill its vision.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability and the best of my ability.
No worries. Thank you very much, and I'll give a minute. I think there's some celebrating to be done amongst firefighters and paramedics, so you're, you can, liberty call, you all can go ashore. That's an A B T. Liberty call for the fire department. Next item of business, comments by the city manager, Robert Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a few items on the agenda this evening that I want to go over. Before we get to the published agenda, though, Susan Branks could bring up the website. If anyone has traveled on Route 60 today or any time this week, they're going to notice that there's an awful lot of work going on, and that's because they will be placing the pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks right there near Academy Woods. We've added some information on the city's website about the activity and the work that's going to be taking place this week. We've been assured by the contractor that it will be done before the start of next week in the BMW, so it won't restrict traffic on Route 60 in that immediate area. But if you've been to the Compost Center, driven down, you know that they've been doing an awful lot of work over the last couple of months to prepare the abutments and have them ready for bringing the bridge in. Actually, the bridge will be placed, I believe it's going to be Saturday evening between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM Sunday morning. So if you're up at that time of the night and you want to go and watch the bridge being placed, you could certainly do that. But I would mention that even though it's going to be placed this week, then there's still a lot of work to do to finish it up before it's officially open, which probably is going to be sometime in November.
We were walking out there last Sunday, and I, for the first time, knowing about this bridge being placed, for the first time, I really looked at that span. What is it, 221 feet?
Yeah, I'm not... Maybe Bob Bell's...
Some number.
That's correct.
It's a prodigious span, so it'll be quite an engineering feat to lift that in place.
No, we're very fortunate to get that connection in place, so very fortunate that we had this opportunity to work with Lake County Forest Preserve District and a number of private residents who helped donate and make this happen, so good news. The next item Susan will bring up is, next week, we're going to have 120,000 of our closest friends and neighbors joining us with the BMW Championship out at Conway Farms Golf Club. The tournament on Tuesday and Wednesday are practice rounds and the pro-am. The tournament actually starts on Thursday and goes through Sunday, as long as we don't have any rain-out days, and hopefully the community will come out and support the event. We are encouraging residents that if they're looking for information, they can go on our website. Our website will also link them to the WGA and the BMW Championship website. We would encourage our residents to take the shuttle. They can come to either one of the train stations, and there will be shuttle bus service from the train stations to Conway Farms. So we hope the weather will cooperate, and it'll be a wonderful event for the community going forward. Tim?
I've used the shuttle in the past, and it's just as easy as it could possibly be.
Yeah.
So I would add to your sentiment about the shuttle. Great way to go.
Very convenient, yeah. Oh, we'd like that. Actually, I think it's going to be, what we've seen over the previous two tournaments is a growing number of people who do take the train, come into the stations, and take shuttles, or last year, or in '15, for the first time, we also had an Uber/Lift drop-off pickup location, too, at the West Station. And then what they would do is get dropped off there and then get shuttled into the course from that location, and I think we're going to see those numbers grow as well. So would really encourage people to use public transportation whenever possible. The next item, the council knows that on September 18th, you are scheduled to have a workshop meeting to talk about your fiscal stress parameters. But coupled with that is there's been conversations for approximately the last three months with representatives of school districts 67 and 115 about the state's impact, not just on the city of Lake Forest, but on the school districts. Between the two school districts and the city, we roughly make up about 75% of the property tax bill for local Lake Forest residents, and there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion in the state about how these state decisions are going to not only affect the city, but also affect the school districts, both 67 and 115. So on the 3rd of October, we will be at the Gordon Community Center. It will be cosponsored with the League of Women Voters. They will be helping to moderate the event that evening, and it will be an opportunity not only to hear from the mayor and the board, the school board presidents, but also then an opportunity to ask questions. You know, there's been a lot written in the paper about the possibility of property tax freezes, and we've talked at the council level about what that potential impact might be. That impact is even more significant at the school because 90, 95% of their total revenue comes from property taxes. And so any adjustment in that clearly is going to have an impact on the way they do business. So we really would encourage the aldermen, but also the residents, to come to Gordon on October 3rd and to hear from their respective leaders, their board leaders. The third meeting I wanted to mention is, as the council knows, there's been a lot of discussion over the past 11, 12 months about freight rail service in Lake Forest. We have three rail lines that go through town, one being just commuter, one being just freight, and one being just... just freight, and one being commuter and freight. And in the course of all those conversations and our meetings with the villages of Glenview, Northbrook, Deerfield, and Bannockburn, that while these trains have been running for an awful long time within our communities, we know very little about them, and what they do, and what their future is. So, as we talked further, we felt that it was appropriate to hold this joint event with the five communities at Trinity International University in Bannockburn, and try and bring in a panel of experts who actually understand the whole freight industry and would be able to answer questions that residents might have. This event is being held on Wednesday, October 11th, as I said, at Trinity University, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. The moderator the evening will be Professor Joseph Sweeterman from the Chattock Institute at DePaul University. You've probably seen him quoted a number of times in the paper on transportation-related issues, and there will be three other panelists that will be joining him for a brief sort of overview and presentation about what's happening in the rail, freight rail industry, and then be opening it up for questions from the public. There's going to be a lot more publicity. We'll be sending it out not only within our community, but I think it will have broad Chicago region interest, and so I believe the auditorium at Trinity University will hold up to 250 people, and so we're hoping for a good turnout that evening on this subject as well. So, with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that the council might have with respect to any of those three upcoming events. And if not, then I will move on to the next item.
And well-publicized.
Yes, and there will be more of information on our website, and we have some press releases that will be going out on the various events as well. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Sally Swarthout and Chuck Myers to talk about the North and South Beach Access Road, because if you tried to go down to the beach today utilizing the South Beach Access Road, you couldn't get there. And Chuck's going to tell us what's going on and what we can expect over the next couple of months. Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor Lansing and members of the council. Last month, Mike Thomas gave a detailed report on a lot of the work that's going on, on the South Beach and North Beach Access Road. So, today, I'm just going to give you a brief update on that, and the construction did start today on the South Beach Access Road portion of it. Today, they started doing a lot of the tree work, tree removals, things like that, and we expect them, Lake County grading, that is, we expect them to move pretty quickly on this project. They have to be done, as it says in here. We want significant completion before Thanksgiving, when the asphalt plant shuts down. So, we have notified all the boaters, obviously. All that was taken care of ahead of time. Also, we went ahead and notified the residents along the travel routes. There will be a lot of trucks going through, so we let them know as well. So, just to reiterate, there won't be any vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic, including city trucks or anything. No one will be able to pass through there from here on out. So, on the North Beach Access Road, starting today, we've changed things a little bit. Prior to today, we had closed one of the lanes with concern for the integrity of the road, where the ravine had slipped away. It was very close to the edge of the road. So, you recall, we closed one lane all the way through that sharp 90-degree corner at the bottom. That required us having flaggers there. The rec staff and others were out there throughout the summer, end of summer, because of the high traffic. What we wanted to do now was, we have not, we've changed the closure so that it doesn't go around the corner. So, now we've set up, you can see in the photo a little bit, we have two stop signs, and you can now see the other person coming at you. So, we've changed it a little bit. We hope that it's self-regulating. We haven't had any problems yet. It's been that way for about a week now. Obviously, we don't want to have to flag this all winter long. So, we will consider actually closing this road off. We'll reevaluate. Once the South Beach Access Road is done, obviously, then people can get back down there. So, we'll reconsider at that point in November. So, we'll also probably have flaggers down there for special events. There are a few coming up, so we'll have flaggers on hand just to make sure everything goes smooth. So, as far as the project itself on the North Beach, they've just started the design phase. They've actually done the survey and some boring out there, so it's underway, and they're working on that quickly. We're pressing to get at least some numbers before we come back to you at the CIP meeting, so that we'll have an idea of what it's going to cost. So, as it says on the slide, many of these things are to be determined, but we do want to find out as much as we can quickly on this. Any questions?
I have a question. I'm not familiar with the construction truck route out of the beach area. Can you go through that?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to have Mike Thomas refresh you on that one. He knows this one better than I do. I don't want to give you bad information.
The trucks will be heading down Deer Path up to Sheridan. They'll head south on Sheridan to Wesley, Wesley out to 41. So, we have notified the residents on Lake Road as well as Deer Path. We've not notified those on Sheridan, but there's going to be a good number of trucks. We're looking at about 10,000 yards. That's a lot of material, and I think they're going to, their goal is to try and knock out the excavation in about eight days, but that's a lot of semis making round trips up north and back, so it'll be busy.
So, have you communicated that to the college, given all the kids going back and forth?
I believe we have, but I will confirm. I will check with our guys in engineering. I know they sent letters out last week, but I believe that, yes, they did.
Chuck, I just have a question. Were we able to get any money, financial assistance from stormwater management, or is that in process?
It is in process. We did reach out to SMC, Mr. Warner, and we're waiting to hear back from him on that.
All right. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Well, the final item on my agenda this evening is annually, representative of Commonwealth Edison comes forward to present their annual report, what their system failures or activities might be, planned improvements for the upcoming year, and we're happy to have back again Mr. James Dudek, who is going to walk us through the annual report. Jim?
Thank you, Bob. Good evening to all. Mayor Lansing and the city council, thank you very much on behalf of ComEd for inviting us in to talk. We've prepared a annual report as Bob has outlined, and we want to share those results with you. First slide I prepared was at a glance for the City of Lake Forest, the overview of the, of our distribution system. I know the slide is busy, but the emphasis here is that there are 26 different circuits that feed the city, and our customer base within Lake Forest is a little bit over 8,300 customers. So, those circuits are, it's a mesh network. It's a grid, so that they tie into one another. In the event one circuit goes out, there is the ability to do some field switching. Sometimes automated switching occurs to get the customers back in service quicker than when the automation was not around. The next slide here is our reliability performance, and from an overall statement, from an overall statement, the City of Lake Forest experienced a 99.998% reliability rate in 2016. We measure our success on two different indexes, the one on the lower left-hand side, excuse me, system average frequency index, interruption index. This is, on average, the number of outages that our customers are seeing on an annual basis within the city. So, if you look at the bottom of that, the bottom of that data, 2016, the index was .84. A little bit, a little bit higher than 2015, which was the best year on record over the last six years that we're illustrating here, but there was a little more challenge with the company with respect to storm activity and also tree outages, causing more outages in the 2016 versus the 2015 timeframe. On the right-hand side is Arcady Index, or Customer Average Interruption Duration Index. This is measured in minutes of interruption. So, again, six years of data, 153 minutes was, on average, the time to restore customers for the outages that occurred, more than the 93 minutes that we saw in 2015, but again, attributing to those other two drivers of more storms and more tree activity. To mitigate outages, ComEd has been under a very robust build-out program. We refer to it as our Energy Infrastructure Modernization Act. It was signed into law in 2011. Essentially, it provided an additional $2.6 billion of funds to be put into our system, half of that being infrastructure improvements in the form of poles, transformers, wires, cables. The other half, the other $1.3 billion, went towards our smart meter build-out with the AMI meters. So, for the slide you're looking at here, for 2017, on the far-hand, right-hand side, we are focusing in on 22 projects in the neighborhoods, mostly on the residential side here. We're going to be installing approximately 19 miles of underground residential cable. This is the cable that is servicing mostly your residential constituencies. We direct-bury that cable, so as we put this new cable in the ground where appropriate, we'll be directionally boring that equipment, boring that cable with the appropriate equipment. We do interface with your Public Works Department to get that all coordinated and make the necessary notifications. Good news is, 19 of those projects are already completed, representing about 11 and a half miles of brand-new system cable that has been installed. Mainline underground cable improvements, there is some replacement going on. It looks like we have a little more than a half a mile of mainline cable. If you're familiar with our overhead system, with the wires on top of the poles, envision that system underground, and that's what we refer to as our mainline cables. So, we replaced about a point, well, we replaced .6 miles of mainline cable, completed some manhole assessments and manhole refurbishments as appropriate. Excuse me. All of the, all of the planned overhead, overhead inspections and corrective actions that were identified for 2017 have already been completed for the city. A special note was, we're pretty proud of the fact of working with your Public Works Department. There was an area of town that we referred to as the Waveland Project. It was right on the streets, the Street of Waveland, and we've got a little more detail on the slide coming up. But we converted 3,000 feet of overhead cable that was in a wetland area, and we pulled that to a new front, front lot line type of installation, and we put that underground. So, instead of the system being in a situation where it may be difficult to service because of the wetland situation, and if outages would occur, it would extend the customers' outages, ComEd proactively worked with the community to get that located to the front of the homes and then make service connections in that way. And then finally, at the very bottom of there, ComEd, through this EIMA program of 2011, that law that was put into effect, the pledge was made to inspect all of our poles across our entire service territory. So, we are now up to this area of the service territory. So, there will be 1,489 wood pole inspections planned before the end of this year. What they are, there will be a private company that's out of Wisconsin. It's Osmos, Osmos Pole Company. They do all of our inspections. They will, they will tag the pole where appropriate to either have it tagged as a good pole, tagged as a one that needs, that needs replacement, but not eminently, and then there'll be also a tag there that will need immediate replacement. So, and then a proper notification will be made to our construction department to get that, get that into the work schedule. Talk about some of the improvements here. This is the Waveland Project. This is where we converted the overhead service in the wetland areas, converted it to underground in the front lots. Approximately 3,000 feet of cable is installed there. Couple different circuits here, different parts of town, rather large project there. Upper part of the screen, approximately 21,315 feet of cable, brand-new cable going in. This is off of Wesley on the west side, and as it turns into Sheridan, and going south of, south of the Wesley, Wesley Road there, out to the lakefront. So, sizable amount of new cable going into that part of the territory. At the bottom of the, of the slide there, another 4,900 feet of new underground residential cable being installed for 2017. Again, a couple more new jobs. Just illustrating some of the, some of the size of these jobs, 9,300 feet of cable on the top portion there, and 47, almost 4,800 feet of underground cable on the second illustration there. And what I wanted to do is take a moment just to give you an update on the AMI, ComEd's AMI Smart Meter program. We started the installs a couple of years ago. Our progress to date is as such, ComEd, we've installed 8,916 meters, smart meters, within the City of Lake Forest. Currently, we've, I should say, we have that many meters in the city. We've exchanged or put in 8,802 smart meters to date. That's what our, that's what our statistics are showing. Still have 114 meters waiting to be exchanged. Those meters are more on the specialized cases, maybe larger customers need to get appointments or some type of arrangements made to get the meter out, exchanged safely, and we try to accommodate the schedule of the customers, so that we're not walking in and interrupting their, their business. We'll work around their schedule and come back when a time is agreeable to both the company and ComEd. Some statistics here on refusal. There was in the town, in the city, 100, off the beginning, gross refusals, represented about 1.1% of the total, you know, refusal of the total meters being installed. We had, we have a customer service department that talks to these refusals, the customers that are refusing, and out of the 100, 36 of them changed their mind and decided to go with the, go with the ComEd Smart Meter. Those that represented a 36% conversion rate. Net refusal still remain at 36.7% on system. And in 2016, I believe it was, there was a resolution, I believe, that the city passed, asking ComEd to, to come up with a solution, a longer, a longer-term solution to when a customer wanted not to have an AMI meter installed, not to have a smart meter installed in their, at their premise. The rate that was originally designed was, stated that the, at the end of the smart meter deployment, one year after that date, the opt-out option would go away. It would be, it would sunset. And so, our program was looking at a 2018, end of 2018, complete program smart meter installation across the system. So, we were, we were looking at December of 2019 to sunset, that particular part of the, of the rate. What we did, we went to the Illinois Commerce Commission, and in October, on October 13th of 2016, the decision was made to extend the smart meter deferred period from that sunset of 2012 to 31, 2019. We would extend it to June 30th of 2022. So, it gave some more time before the, before the opt-out option would sunset. And then also, the promise was made that no later than June 30th of 2020, ComEd would position the ICC to open a proceeding to explore development of a remedy or remedies to permanently address the opt-out, the opt-out option for customers that did not want to have a smart meter. And then finally, some more recent information. ComEd has been working with, with the, with the city staff. There is a section of, and there's a section of town here that has ComEd servicing the customers from a primary side of our system, but there is a limitation to the, to the extent of how far our facilities can go to those properties that are exceeding our standard length of, of installation. So, what does that mean? So, what does that mean? When these properties were built and our system was also built, there was a ComEd-owned portion of the property, of the distribution system, and then there is a customer-owned portion. So, each, both ComEd and the customer have responsibility for repairs and maintenance of that overhead system. There was some outage activity that occurred in springtime, so between ComEd and the city, we've identified 39 property owners that have these customer-owned facilities along with the ComEd, along with ComEd between, on Beverly Lane, between Brighter Lane and Linden. We started into discussions with the city as far as what's the extent of condition and what kind of options are there in order to eliminate this type of setup. We had a field meeting on July 21st, and we met out there, talked to a few of the customers, Alderman, you were out there also, Alderman Romo was out there with us, and Mike Strong from the city. And so, we started to, I brought myself and a team of our engineers came out there to take a look at the situation. Our team has developed internally two options to deal with the situation, and those two options are, right now, they're kind of high-level options. They haven't been fully engineered, but we do have a meeting on September 26th, a community meeting with the stakeholders, the homeowners affected by this, inviting them to come in. ComEd will be present, be happy to answer questions, and outline what those two options And that ends my presentation. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Can I ask you, oh, go ahead.
I have a question. What criteria do you use when you're considering to convert an overhead service to an underground service? So, how does that happen? What's the, where and when?
Our company, underneath the guidance of how we operate under the ICC, Illinois Commerce Commission, and the Illinois Administrative Codes, we need to provide service to our customers in the least-cost manner. So, as you would expect, putting a pole up with overhead wires are much less expensive than a underground situation, although there are times where there is heavy vegetation, a lot of tree areas, or maybe some obstacles that would prohibit ComEd from easily putting a overhead system in. And so, our engineering department, they do weigh both. They take a look at what the cost would be to go with that standard of overhead compared to an underground option, and if the underground comes out to be a more ecological system to install, that's how that decision is made.
So, when you were talking about the changes over on Waveland Road and the extent of the underground, that's replacing overhead, or is that new?
That was replacing overhead, yes. The reason that, and the engineering on that was a little bit different. Normally, our engineering is never kind of cookie cutter, if you want to use that phrase. The obstacles we were dealing with, with the existing overhead service in the rear of the lots was the wetlands, and those wetlands were expanding. So, without some containment of the wetlands and some restoration being done, there was simply no room for us to take the poles out of the wetland and move them closer to the homes and still have a system that we could operate. We would literally be right backed up to the customer's property, and that was not a way to, you know, not a way to service them. So, the option was explored to come in the front, and it turned out to be a good option.
I just had a question, and thank you for meeting with the Beverly homeowners. You were very helpful, and I look forward to the meeting on the 26th. Refresh my recollection, are those homeowners on Beverly responsible for the poles that are on their property?
There is a section of, ComEd has our distribution system, and it's pretty far, it's probably with, I would say, 400, I didn't measure it out.
Yeah.
Mike, 400-plus feet? 400-plus feet from our rear, from the rear lot where our facilities run, to the customer, coming all the way to the customers' individual homes, it's approximately 400, maybe a little bit more in terms of distance, 400 feet. ComEd standard is that we provide the first 150 feet of facility. So, as we, when we first put those services in, put those, put their facilities in service, the decision was made, you know, by the builder or the developer, that, you know, the need for customer-owned facilities would be necessary, which then includes additional poles and also additional wires going all the way from that first 150 feet all the way up to the, up to the premise.
Right, right. That I recall. So, what is, where I'm getting to is, when you were talking about pole inspections, would you also be inspecting those poles on Beverly that are really the responsibility, I guess, of the private property owners?
Good point of clarification. No, the pole inspections I was referring to is ComEd, is a ComEd pole, it's a company-owned pole, not a private property pole.
Okay. I was just wondering if we were going to get into some issues there with them being required to replace some of those poles, right?
Not by, our inspection does not include that.
Okay. That clarifies that for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, a quick question. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up. You're on the agenda, there's an item on the agenda tonight about the South Beach Access Road.
Yes.
And Mike Thomas wanted me to ask you, are you ready to go first thing in the morning if they approve it tonight?
Mike, you and I will be out there together. We are mobile, Bob. We may be one day shy. If you approve tonight, we're ready to go Thursday morning. So, we're going to cut that cable and declare, allow your contractor to do his, to do their work, and we'll come back later after the new conduit is installed, and we'll pull new cable and get everything back to normal.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We supply hot coffee to the job sites. Anything to urge you along.
Our crews will be very, very, very happy to hear that.
All right. Well, thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments by the council members, and I'd like to start with the Lake Forest Marketing Committee.
Thank you.
And First Ward Alderman Prue Beidler and Susan Banks, the city's communications manager, presenting.
Thank you. Actually, Susan and I are joined tonight by Phil Gader, who is our consultant on this project, and he's going to talk you through the website, and we'll do a little bit of a dog and pony here. Deb Fisher is in the room as well, who's also a member of our committee. So, we've, the four of us have been, have been working together very closely now for some time. So, we've got, we've got product to show you, and for those of you at home, everything that we're talking about, we're actually, Susan is taking us to the website. So, everything is at the website, on the website, and the first thing that we're going to show you is the Welcome Home brochure, and Phil has, I don't even know how many hours you put into making this terrific, but it's terrific, and he's going to talk you through it. I might just say to my fellow city council members, you have, this is a, it's a printable edition, and we printed one out for you to prove that it's a printable edition, so that's what you have at your places. But anybody at home can print this out as well. So, if you are trying to entice someone to think of living in Lake Forest, we're giving you a tool. All you have to do is print it or just take your computer. Susan, did you want to say anything before Phil comes on?
Thank you, Alderman Beidler. I thought it might be kind of easier to maybe go through the other things and then have Phil present.
Perfect. Let's do that. Do you want to talk those through, or do you want me to do that? Why don't you bring them up and say what they are?
The first four items here are the ads that have appeared in Sheridan Road Magazine and the print ads. This was in the September issue, talking about the excellence in education in Lake Forest. This ad was in the August issue, talking about our wonderful beach. This ad was in the July issue. We will have a full-page color ad in every issue of Sheridan Road Magazine for three years. We are also going to have a print article in Crane's Chicago Business in November, kind of a business roundtable discussion where we can talk about the marketing campaign. And we've also done some digital advertising in Crane's Chicago Business, targeted at 40,000 subscribers, which are all millennials. So, that will be coming out. Also on this page, you'll see the videos, the documentary-style videos that we've done to date with Carl Stelter, the filmmaker. We also have yet to put on the website the film that Mike Borkowski has done for us, which features the festival and fireworks on the Fourth of July, and we're still refining some films that Carl Stelter is working on, and I think that...
Susan, so this is all, when you go to the city's website, you go to the Welcome Home, it's right, go back up to the top, let's make sure everybody knows how to get there.
Here's our homepage. The Welcome Home marketing campaign has a permanent place on the homepage in the news section, right here.
So, everybody can see where that is, right?
Right. So, this will be updated as we have products and ads and photos and more video. We will be meeting with the Realtor Group this, later this week, and we are setting up meetings with all of the community groups to present this wonderful, wonderful product, which we've been developing for a long time, so.
Yeah, but just before, sorry, Phil comes up, you'll see, you can see by the ads that we've put in Sheridan Road and in the brochure that Phil's about to talk about, there's a theme. There's a quality, we're using very high quality. You're seeing, you know, obviously, you've got the logo at the bottom, but we're trying to be very consistent so that this stuff, you'll see this in the, you know, around-town various places. So, we want people to look at this and go, oh, you know, and be kind of excited about what the next piece is going to be because they're quite different. And Phil will be teeing that up in the brochure.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Remember the good old days of printing a brochure, and you'd get that brochure printed, and somebody would say, "Oh, my gosh," or other words like that, "We forgot to do a page about XYZ." Well, the beauty of this interactive brochure is that we can build it as we go along, adapt it as we go along, and I have to tell you, Susan, about an hour ago, we realized that there was a piece that we had to put in there, so we were able to create, produce, and include this in this brochure within an hour. So, this very, very adaptable piece of interactive media that we're using here, and we're very excited about it. So, is this the clicker here? Oh, so here we go. So, here, I want to take you through it. This is a link which can, which you will be able to go and visit this brochure, and I'll just click through a few pages here. And as you go along, you will see directions to click the page and you will be taken there. So, there's currently 17 pages here, and you can either advance here and go to the next page, which this happens to be education, and then return here to the contents page. So, we have listed here, if my eyes don't deceive me, education, the open lands and parks, history. So, you basically are able to click around by page, which of course, oh, there we go, this one here. This land is your land. So, with a click here, we get directed back to the homepage. And if I can receive this correct, it's off the page there. So, need to scroll down here to where the, sorry, where was it? I want to, sorry, could you just take me back to it here? Because I just need to go back to the, it's not clickable.
We're pretty interested in the Frank Sinatra party. Little plug here for Dickinson Hall while we're...
There you go.
Sounds great.
So, you can drive through the pages like this. This is a click to the Historical Society, and then we've also included at every opportunity interesting facts and figures about the city here, remembering that the aim here is to create a story and create an idea of the surprising side of this town. So, we've injected and explored that to great depth as we go through this piece. City by the lake there. One of the modular kind of niceties of this piece is we've been able to convert a lot of these into printed advertising, a simpler form of the page here, but a printed version nonetheless. We also have links here, and these are all clickable to the businesses you see here. Let's go to Abbey. Again, at a stroke, we can drive around not only the city of Lake Forest, so to speak, but we can visit our partners here, our corporate partners, too. Let's take another look here. We're very proud of our artistic heart and soul, and once again, when you start looking at the creative soul of Lake Forest, it's mind-blowing, the amazing opportunities we all have here. And again, from music, we have two symphonies, which just blows my mind, fabulous thing. So, again, we can click on the link and go to Lake Forest Civic Orchestra here, and in the updatable notion of this, we can add and take away as things change, and it becomes a very cost-effective piece of marketing that we can use all the time. Let's have a look further here. Of course, it's renowned for its shopping districts, so we wanted to cover that and make sure that people can visit. This links us back to the Chamber of Commerce, which has a very comprehensive list of retail and business opportunities, businesses available. We're proud of our college town status, so we wanted to paint this picture that this is in fact a vibrant college town, which actually surprises many people. All the links here click straight to the Lake Forest College's website. So, it's a very functional, we hope, fun, direct way for people who are considering Lake Forest as a home to come and visit, kick the tires, as they say in advertising, and really explore what we have to offer. I'll just do one more example here. Let's take another look. The stunning events here, all linked to the various events that we've come to love and own here in town. Faith is very important to our community, and we've linked every church and their specific websites here, too. Let's just go to church. So, you can see, it's a very usable document. These links will be, the link to the document will be, as we said, available online, but we're also creating specific versions of this for the real estate companies here in town. So, this is going to be primarily the same document, as it were, but branded somewhat against each of the real estate companies, because after all, this is also very much a real estate push that we're doing as part of the marketing.
Yeah, just finish the pages.
Yeah, there we go. And here is a specific real estate page, which features the main players here in town, and each subsequent real estate version will have its own specific pages with their fine logos on there, too. Here's the ad we did an hour ago. So, I can't vouch for the editorial correctness of it, but this is to show you that we can actually, at a stroke, include information that is very important to the continuing growth of this marketing. Here's a By the Numbers, it's in the details, because as you walk around town, this is a beautiful place to visit and buy the many great architectural wonders that we can find here. That's it.
Thank you, Phil.
Questions?
Questions, comments? So, we've been hard at work, we wanted you to know that we've been hard at work, and I will say, I've been tracking this, I come to the meetings, but Phil has been working really hard to make all those connections work, and then Deb and Susan were just indefatigable in checking to make sure all the links worked. So, thank you all for doing that. I'm really proud of the product and didn't have all that much input, but I'm just thrilled, so, thank you. Now, you know, I mouthed off, but you know, you guys actually checked the link, so that's...
Can I just ask a quick question? When you go to volunteerism and philanthropy, if you click that, where does it go?
Phil? It goes to a page on our website that we've dedicated to that. Let me just bring it back up here. it back up here.
It's page thirteen.
Brochure.
Page thirteen. If you need that, page thirteen. You just go on the contents page. We're going to show you how this works.
Okay, so this page has all of the schools, community links, government...
So this is actually another page from our city website?
So then you click on, if...
Right, any of those.
Yeah, if Glazier is your interest.
Right.
Cool. Do you have Lake County Cares on there?
We'll have to check.
You know, I was in Gorton today and realized that the old Volunteer Bureau has morphed into Lake County Cares, apparently.
It is here.
Great.
So we encourage anyone who's missing to please contact us, and we will add them to the webpage.
I had another question on the year of events.
Stunning events, page eleven.
Aren't we having an Oktoberfest? I think some of the rec center stuff maybe isn't there.
Yes, page eleven.
Where's Sally Swarth at?
Should Oktoberfest be included in that? Yes, I don't know how that happened.
Now that it's the second annual, we can definitely do that.
Give me an hour and it will...
Yeah, good.
Don't we have a cardboard regatta and some other things?
All right, so if you see, this is a great example, if you see something that you think should be here, and Phil has told us how easy it is to adjust, just let us know, we'll do it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we've had some suggestions already, good. Susan, what else? Is that it?
Well, actually, Alderman Biedler.
Stay tuned, I think you're going to add some information.
I would like to add just a little piece to the presentation you just heard, because I know that, as Susan indicated earlier, we're going to be meeting with real estate community later this week, and many of you have been hearing from the real estate community the last couple of years about how bad things are. And while I know Alderman Biedler and the team here would love to take complete credit for what's happened since we've launched the Welcome Home Campaign, I thought I would provide you with some facts this evening, so the next time you hear from somebody that talks about how horrible things are, you'll actually have some data to say, the glass isn't half-empty, it's actually three-quarters full. So Susan, if you could run through, and I think some of you have noticed this on the flash reports that you get monthly, but you can see the growth of sales on detached single-family homes in this first slide, the next slide is the attached single-family closed sales. It, you know, you always see an increase once the weather gets nicer, starting in April, May, June, and July, and so forth, but I think from our standpoint, I think the next slide, Susan, we've had one-hundred-and-fifty-two residential sales or transfers, which is the highest for the same period in the last six years. Average sale prices up, and that we're obviously well ahead of budget with respect to our real estate tax revenue. So all very positive signs, and while we can't draw a direct correlation between the Welcome Home Campaign and what's happening in the real estate community, clearly it seems to be having a contributing, or being a contributing factor. So we just wanted to make sure we shared this with you this evening, and we'll be sharing this with the real estate community on Thursday as well.
I think that's it from us then, Bob, unless you want anything more. Mr. Mayor, I think we're...
Thank you very much. Good to see product, a productive endeavor for sure, and I've heard comment, people have come up to me and mentioned it, and the people are very aware of this effort. Next item is the, oh, Tim Newman, yes, was to make an address.
Just wanted to make a quick comment on Deer Path Golf Course. On July 12th, we got that terrible rainstorm, and the East Cokey Drainage Ditch went to its highest level ever and flooded nearly the entire course. Since then, mere scant six weeks ago, the golf staff has worked incredibly hard to get the course back into excellent playing conditions. I think enormous compliments go to Vince and Brian and the entire staff over there. I would like that noted, but right after that storm, we kind of caught a good run of weather, and this past weekend, Friday through Monday, we booked over eight-hundred rounds, and that is a shot in the arm for the program of immeasurable upside there. So the amount that you approved, the council approved last month for continuing improvements, we're catching some momentum here. There's a vibe there at that course that I haven't seen in quite a while. I see couples playing on the weekend, I see young kids, it's in a good spot right now, so I think we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Good, well, thank you, Tim. Yes, the improvements and the refurbishments are very evident, one is out there. Any other comments by council members? Next item of business is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Would anybody here to step forward? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration, and we have ten of them tonight, so all listen carefully. The first is approval of the August 7th, 2017 City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, the check register for the period July 29th to August 25th, 2017. Third, approval of an amendment to the Finance Committee and City Council Meeting Schedule for 2018. Four, resolution of appreciation for retiring fire department employee Michelle Cousins. Five, consideration of a request to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with DP Consulting LLC for business advocacy services. Six, approval of a customer work agreement with ComEd for the relocation of an electrical line under the South Beach Access Road. Seven, request for the City Council to waive the bidding process to purchase a computerized electronic citation, crash, and administrative hearing platform from Quicket Solutions, the winning contractor from a completed RFP by the Lake County Chiefs of Police Association in conjunction with the Lake County Clerk's Office. Eight, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board, first reading and if desired by the council, a final approval thereof. Nine, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading and if desired by the council, final approval thereof. Ten, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the Elloa Farm Spooktacular Event, first reading and if desired by the council, a final approval. As in the past, if any Alderman would like to remove one of these items from this list for a separate vote, please so indicate, otherwise I think what we'll do is sort of tick down in terms of comments or questions that councilmen may have. So number one, with respect to the City Council Minutes, any comments or thoughts? Okay, two, the check register of the city for the period of July 29th to August 25th. Three, approval of an amendment to the Finance Committee and City Council Meeting Schedule for 2018, which is reflected on the city's website, or will be reflected on the city's website. Four, resolution of appreciation. Five, consideration of a request to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with DP Consulting for business advocate services. Alderman Moreno.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, I realize the amount is just over the limit to come before City Council, and in that regard, I question what the bidding process was here and how DP Consulting was selected. And secondly, if I understand correctly, the city's taking, in essence, credit risk on other municipalities to reimburse us? I think I understood that. That's later, thank you. Okay, I'll save that, I have only one question.
The city did go through a process of advertising for a consultant, for an independent consultant. We did a number of interviews, received about fifteen applications, I believe, and felt that this particular consultant best fit the city's really interim needs. I think for a couple reasons, we're looking at this as a short-term position, we really, we know we're just about to jump off into the budget process, we really want to see how that process plays out before we make a long-term commitment. We're also looking at this position in the context of some things that are changing. We know that very soon we will have, hopefully, a significant increase in the number of residents within walking distance of the Central Business District, so we really want to evaluate exactly what is needed from this position. We did base the salary looking at some earlier compensation that was provided to our previous consultants, so looked at this on an eight-month basis through this fiscal year.
Maybe a follow-on, more of a comment, I suppose, or a question. I think the West Business District also needs attention, and I know that you are aware of my concerns there, but it could be a walking area as well, and it's not. It really is restricted by the busy streets that go through it, so I would like to put that on the plan for discussion with this entity or whoever the council approves.
We will certainly do that.
Thank you.
I had a comment, too, when I was reading over this, because I've had several residents talk to me about special events that the city sponsors, and that's probably why I keyed into that page on the website. And, you know, I think Susan Kelsey also sort of worked on things like the farmer's market and maybe bringing a few special events maybe to the beach, I think that was part of our strategic planning discussions also, and I think in order to move forward on some of those recommendations that came out of the strategic plan, we need an individual who would work on those items as well, and I didn't see that in this job description specifically.
That is something we did identify. I think we want to be sure that we're looking at special events, not duplicating efforts, for instance, of the Park and Recreation Department, of some individual property owners of the college, but I think certainly coordinating, looking at events, making sure we're doing things that we do well, so that definitely will be part of the responsibilities of this position.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions on that item? Number six, customer work agreement with ComEd, which was discussed previously this evening. Number seven, waiving the bidding process to purchase a computerized electronic citation.
I have a comment on that. Not a comment, actually, but a question, because I, you know, in some of my work with the Bar Association, I know that this has been a hot topic countywide, as to what vendor the court system is going to use, so I just wanted to be certain that Quicket will interface with both the state and the county court systems.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of council, the clerk's office hasn't decided, they picked the two, basically, we did an RFP, everybody agreed that the two vendors selected, Tyler and Quicket, were the two vendors that everybody, that the county and the clerk's office and the courts wanted to use. The problem is the county hasn't got their ducks in a row yet to decide what they want to use, but both systems will integrate, hopefully eventually, with what they want. So they put the RFP together, they had the, they set the guidelines for what the vendor needed to be able to do in the future. The problem is, all the municipalities are going to be ready long before the county will, because the county moves much slower than the rest of us do. So, and Christian Burner, he's with Quicket Solutions, he can tell you a little more about, you know, his company, but, you know, right now, there's already Mundeline, Fox Lake, and one of the round lakes are already live with Quicket now. The county, the Sheriff's Department, is probably going to go live with it next month, along with Buffalo Grove. I know I talk a lot with the, my liaison with Highland Park, they're in the same, they're about in the same process we are, and all of us are greatly satisfied with what Quicket brings to the table versus what Tyler brings to the table. And the biggest thing for us is, is its smaller IT footprint, that Quicket provides a cloud-based system, there's no subscription cost, if we don't like it in six months, we can quit using it. And as any of you know who use computers a lot, the biggest problem is, when we load outside software on our computers here at the police department, the first thing that breaks is that computer interface on the computers, and it's whether they're pushing monthly updates, yearly updates. Some computers will update better than others, and that's where the weak link in the chain is. With the online, you know, cloud-based system, we don't, it's a smaller strain on our IT infrastructure, and the process works much better.
No, I read that in the review.
But as far as where the county is in their, the politics in that is vast and deep.
So my real concern here is, if the county goes with Tyler, which is obviously a possibility, will this interface appropriately with that system?
It's my understanding it will. I'll let Christian take it from there.
Yeah, maybe you could elaborate on that. I mean, I don't want to invest in a system, and then the county goes with something else, and the state goes with something else, because I think Tyler might also be what the state is looking at, and so I don't want to invest in a system that's going to be obsolete.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, and thank you. So my name's Christian Burner, I'm the CEO of Quicket, so I'm happy to go through some of these points about the project for Lake Forest, but also what we're doing with other agencies across the county as well. So the way that we've seen the implementation, and now we've done it actually successfully with several agencies in Lake County that have contracted with us, is basically, is there's two distinct phases of this project. The first phase, which is presented to you as the agenda item here, is to digitize a lot of the workflow for the Lake Forest Police Department. Phase two, then, is potentially at some later point in time, but unknown at this point, is to eventually perhaps set up an interface with the county. But phase one for Lake Forest, just like a lot of the other agencies that are contracting with Quicket, is to digitize for the benefit of your city. A lot of these processes make them electronic, so like, as a simple example of that is, you also have your local citations and the state citations, so currently, right now, all those processes are done on carbon copy paper. So that process for the officers is very time-consuming, one of the most dangerous places that an officer can be, and also for a citizen to be, is on the side of a busy street. By making this process electronic, we are dramatically, and usually by about seventy percent, lowering the length of traffic stop.
I'm sold on your product, and I understand the need for it, but I'm just concerned about the interface with the state and the county operating systems, and perhaps we would be well-advised to hold on this decision for a few more months until we know where the county and the state are going.
Yes, and to that point, I have a few comments. I wanted to just lead up to that, though, by emphasizing, though, is the agencies that have gone live with Quicket, not just in Lake County, but we serve a number of agencies across the state as well, a number of agencies in Cook, DuPage, Champaign, and other counties in the state. So I just wanted to point out quickly those benefits, but the key thing we also emphasized, though, was their interoperability with other systems as well. So, I mean, in the computer world essentially is, there's only so many ways that you can store data and transmit data. Those are two fundamental things, storing and transferring data. Quicket has guaranteed, and we've proven, as part of our RFP process, actually is our interoperability with other systems. There's only so many different ways that a computer system can store and transmit data, and that's something that we guarantee as part of our pro- data. And that's something that we guarantee as part of our proposal, is that whatever system becomes in place, I don't know if it's in a few months, but I think the more realistic scenario, considering that we've seen similar case management interfaces built in other large counties across the nation, it's usually a multi-year process. But point being is, though, when that time does come, we are willing, as a vendor, to set up that interface. And actually, that's a pricing that we've already negotiated as part of the RFP process with the Lake County Chiefs of Police, is we put that pricing in place so that there's no surprise to when that time comes. So we're guaranteeing that price. We're guaranteeing that we're willing to work with any system that does come in place. And there's only so many ways that you can transmit and store data. So I think for that is, that's why Quicket has high confidence that we're going to be able to work with whatever comes in place. Importantly, though, at the end of the day also, though, is why Quicket was chosen as the preferred vendor by the police department, along with a number of other agencies. And in fact, to date, something to emphasize is, of all the agencies across Lake County, Quicket has been the only chosen vendor so far in this process. So we've, so in terms of price, features, and even like things like security of this data, right? This is very sensitive data. Quicket provides the most modern and affordable system for all these things. Nevertheless, though, as the chief was saying, though, it is a subscription. So the way that we're also fundamentally changing these IT systems is that you're not investing in something that doesn't work. And you're not going to be stuck with something that doesn't work. It's a subscription model, so in the absolute worst-case scenario, we've never had anyone cancel on us yet in the history of our company, but should that happen, you won't be stuck with something that doesn't work.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, Chief, I'm fascinated by the labor productivity that this portends. I've been to the police department, seen the mounds of paperwork, and your officers writing up case reports, looking for pieces of paper. And this should be extraordinarily helpful.
That's the benefit of the system, is, you know, if an officer, if I stop you, and I write you a ticket, a warning, and I have to do a crash report, then that's three pieces of paper that I have to fill out by hand. And then I have to move that paperwork to the records division. They have to input all of that manually. Then all of that gets condensed, sent up to the clerk's office. And then the clerk, someone at the clerk's office has to manually input all that data in. The long-term benefit is, I type your information from your driver's license, and when I run your license plate, it goes into the system. It self-populates the ticket, the warning, and the crash report. That information gets digitally sent into our records management system, which holds it. And then out of that information in our management system, it'll push the, eventually, it'll push that information to the clerk's office for their use in the court system. It'll also condense the information that we have to send to the state for traffic stop analysis and for UCR reporting. And all of that is taking the human element, you know, a lot of the human element out of it, the bad handwriting that the officers have, the, you know,
Really?
miswriting of driver's license numbers and license plate numbers, and, you know, and then, you know, the data entry errors that, you know,
Yeah, they creep in.
someone types a one instead of a two. So I think it'll, in the long term, it'll really streamline our whole process.
Should be very productive.
Every year, we get, the state and the feds put requirements on us to collect more data and report more data, and that takes a lot of man-hours. And this will help us generate that data and be able to push it out to the different agencies that need it. And even members of the council, it will help us generate data when you say, well, how many accidents have we had on this street or at this intersection? That'll help us start to gather a lot of that information.
Well, it's also a feature, too, to have a local company, Illinois company. And thank you for coming to tell us more about the system. I've actually seen this at work, actually, in another state. It's really amazing.
Other states have had this for a while.
Unbelievable, yeah. Okay, any other questions on Quicket? Okay, thank you, Chief. Next, ordinances from the building, or recommendations from the building review board. Any comments? Zoning Board of Appeals, number nine. Any questions? And the LOA Spooktacular Event. Any questions or thoughts? All right, hearing none. I will ask for a motion to approve the omnibus vote as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you very much. And this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Boyer?
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Tack?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Burchman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item for consideration this evening is new business, and I'd like to introduce Bob Kylie to talk about an approval of an agreement with the University of Illinois Chicago to provide data and benchmarking administrative support to the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative. That's a mouthful, Robert.
Yes, it is. And it's taken a long time to get here as well, so I will try and brief my overview. But the city has participated in performance measurement or benchmarking for probably six to eight years through ICMA Insights program. There weren't a number of communities nationwide that were participating, which ultimately is, I think, the main reason that the program cratered, because they had a tremendous number of metrics that they were requesting the participating communities to complete, but also because of the lack of communities that were similar in size and makeup and so forth to Lake Forest or to Austin, Texas, or whatever the case might be with the participating communities, that it lost some of its value, because you really didn't have anything to benchmark or compare and contrast the data that you were receiving on. Starting back in 2016, the city of Lake Forest reached out to a number of other neighboring communities and said, is there a possibility that we could start something here on our own in Illinois? There are a couple of consortiums like this operating in Arizona, North Carolina, Tennessee, Florida, but they're scattered, and they all have some of their own advantages and disadvantages in terms of what they are able to accomplish. So we learned by reaching out to these different organizations and consortiums and began to have this dialogue with these communities over the course of the last year, year and a half. I think we originally started with about seven communities, and actually, the county of Lake was a part of the initial conversation, and then some communities dropped off. But more recently, having finally put a, what I'll call a program together, that people could actually see, touch, and feel, that we have gotten the initial participation up to 11 communities. As part of this process, we recognized early, too, that we needed to have an entity to help scrub and verify the data, because if the data is not credible, then it also will fall under its own weight as well, because no one will trust the data and therefore won't use it. So we went through an RFP process, and we reached out Northern Illinois University, University of Illinois Chicago, a, an agency that actually does our geographic information service right now, and interviewed the different organizations, and ultimately decided on UIC and their public administration program to help us work through this, as they've done similar projects for not-for-profit, and it really fits a niche for them, because they will actually, and maybe helping to keep the cost down, will be using some of their graduate students in their MPA program, who may ultimately be using some of the data and the information for capstone projects and other work that they will do within the classroom. So the item that's on your agenda this evening is to have a contract between the city of Lake Forest and UIC, because we were going to be the lead agency with UIC. We will then, in turn, have memorandums of understanding with each of the other 10 communities, spelling out what their financial responsibilities are and other obligations under being a charter member of the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Consortium. And our hope is, is that, or the timeline is, is that we will begin in late September by bringing our police chiefs together and city managers together, and begin identifying what are the problems that our communities are facing right now. What is the data and the information that we need to collect? Because our goal is not to collect data for the sake of collecting data and have 600 metrics that we are evaluating, but to really look at what those 10, 15, 20, 30 metrics are, that will really generate the kind of information that we're looking for, that will help us better manage our departments and possibly make changes going forward. So we bring the group together. As part of this, UIC also will be doing a sort of a national search to see what other kind of benchmarking or performance measurements are out there in these areas to help us create what these metrics will be. We will then go through the phase of collecting the data. Once the data is collected, then it's probably the most important step in the process, which is bringing everybody back together again and talking about what is the data telling us? What can we learn from the data? Why does, you know, Buffalo Grove's information look different than Lake Forest, or different than Will Met, or whatever the case might be? And to have that dialogue, which ultimately, and we hope, will lead to management decisions, better operational decisions within the respective departments. We chose to start with police, because actually, it was a toss-up between police and fire, because they tend to represent two of the biggest expenditures in municipal government. And also, to a certain extent, because they're, right now, are collecting a lot of data in and of itself. And so there might be some of the data that they are collecting that we're able to use, and we don't have to be redundant. But I think with the advice of UIC, we felt that it was critical that we start small, both in terms of the number of municipalities that are participating, but also start with one department. And we work through this process. We fine-tune it. We're likely to make changes after the first year. But after year one, then year two, we would do police and fire. Year three, we'd do police, fire, and public works. And so we would layer additional departments on each year as we go forward. It's also hoped that if this is successful, not only will it grow in number of communities, but then we will formally establish a consortium, and Lake Forest will no longer be the lead agency. So we're basically doing this for the first year or two, to allow the consortium to get its feet on the ground, get running, and then hopefully you will see in the not-too-distant future, coming back to you with more of a consortium agreement and participation agreement, and Lake Forest would be one of maybe 30 or more communities that would be participating in this venture. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I will say it's, the agenda item isn't substantially the form. The city attorney has responded to the contract that was provided to us from UIC with some suggested changes. You might appreciate that the university had its own sort of style of contract, and so the attorneys are sort of working out some of those stylistic changes. There wasn't anything substantial there, just a few clarifying issues. But we hope to have those back now that we're back from the holidays, and finalize the agreement here shortly, if approved tonight by the city council. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about the undertaking, or how we got here tonight.
Question. Ray?
Yes. Bob, how important is it that you have some commonality among the participants in terms of data gathering and benchmarking? Is that a factor, or do you feel that, you know, you can have communities that are quite diverse and still provide a meaningful input in a work program here?
No, it's a very good question, and we've spent a lot of time talking about it. And I will say, and I won't say which communities they are, but there were a couple of communities that said they would not participate unless there were a couple of like communities like them within the consortium, because it is critical, you know, and I'll just say Schaumburg is in there. You know, Schaumburg is different than Lake Forest.
So the size is different, no question about it.
Exactly. And, you know, they're predominantly commercial, and we're predominantly residential. And so I think there are definitely some things that can be learned. For example, one of the conversations that we've had, and sort of the approach is not to decide what metrics we're collecting, but to really decide what the issues are that we want to address, is some of those issues are similar, whether it is Schaumburg or Lake Forest. You know, as we were chatting, one of the things we talked about was the increase in cases involving mental health, and the impact that they're having on police departments and having to deal with situations that they are not necessarily trained on. But right now, I can't tell you if that's five or 500 in the course of the year. And, but as each of those communities talked about it, they, each of them talked about how it's becoming increasingly challenging for them and their officers to deal with those kinds of situations. So in that one particular instance, while Schaumburg and Lake Forest are not the same, we probably can learn from each other. But that's one example. But there are going to be other examples where you're going to want to have like communities, and that's why, you know, Will Met, Highland Park, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, those are the communities that I think ultimately we are going to be looking at in terms of comparing ourselves as we benchmark this data.
And hopefully, if there's some unique issue for one municipality, and that doesn't become part of the process that you have, which works itself into the benchmarking for all communities.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
I also see where we're being asked to fund the program. I take it you have comfort in the creditworthiness of the others reimbursing the city?
I do. All of them have committed to participation. They all are aware of the fact that this is on the agenda this evening. They've all received a draft of their MOU. So we will have 10 separate MOUs with respect to their contribution of roughly $5,000 and
Fortunately, not big bucks.
Not big money. But if they don't pay up, we'll make sure we talk about those communities publicly at a meeting, and we'll ask Steve Saden to go ask them why they didn't pay up.
Bob, could I just pile on your, just for a second, the example that you gave, Ray, which I thought was a terrific one, the mental health, you know, the treatment of increasing numbers of mental health cases that our, that our public safety staff deal with. In the hospital, the New Lake Forest Hospital, has more dedicated rooms and differently-designed rooms, state-of-the-art rooms for the mental, for the, for the increasing number of cases that they're getting. Many of them, so they're not, I think, I think what, if I'm getting this correct, because I asked this question specifically, actually, it was Wynne Kane from the League of Women Voters who called me, and it's an issue that's on their radar screen, and she said, did I know anything about what was happening at the hospital? And it happened that we had, we had had a tour. So they can't, they don't have inpatient there, but they can, they can now hold people for longer than they could before. And I think there were two dedicated rooms that we all saw, which was very impressive. So that would suggest, too, that the hospital now has a sensitivity to that. I realize that isn't exactly the subject, but since you brought that up as an example, I thought it was an important one to note, that this is really another way the hospital is going to be state-of-the-art in something that we know is necessary.
Yeah. Well, and I hope that as a byproduct of that, and actually, we sort of started to get ahead of ourselves in terms of answering some of these questions, was that a community like Lake Forest probably can't have a full-time social worker on staff to deal with these. There's probably not enough cases to deal with them. But again, as you become part of a consortium, there may be five or 10 communities that say, well, can we each take a piece of one, or is there, can we contract with a third party to do this kind of work? So hopefully, the process will work, that we identify the problems, we collect the data, so we're making decisions based on real information and not anecdotal stories. But then we ultimately start talking about solutions and how we can address these problems in a very cost-effective way.
I wasn't clear what the university's contribution's going to be to this whole thing. What exactly are they going to do? Are they going to be setting up the structure of this organization? I mean,
It's less about the structure, and it's more about the instrument of collecting the data, cleansing the data, and helping us to interpret the data. Because, go ahead.
But this organization must have some sort of governing body to it, right? I mean, if we're, if Lake Forest is going to be the lead community, then are we also, in addition to our monetary contribution, I assume we're contributing some of, some staff time, either yours or someone else's, to organizing this, this entity?
Well, actually, up to this point in time, it's really been the staffs of the initial four communities, which is Schaumburg, Buffalo Grove, Lake Bluff, and Lake Forest. The staffs of those communities, and Jim Locklear in the back has been sort of the secretary of the group, if you will, up to this point in time. secretary of the group, if you will, up to this point in time, really have done the significant amount of work to get us to we are, to where we are today. The next step in the process is UIC will actually send out a survey to start getting people to think about what those questions are. Each community is going to be responsible for inputting its data, but when the data is once inputted, then it's UIC's responsibility to look at the data and say, is it accurate? You know, one of the problems you're going to have is that you're going to have 11 different organizations inputting data, and to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples is going to be critical for them to reach out to each of those institutions and make sure that we've inputted the data in the same way. And if not, then to contact those communities and to go and, and to really work the data. Quite honestly, that's probably the most labor-intensive process, is to really verify that the data is accurate and true. So, that's really where UIC comes in, but also then, they're going to be doing the research to say, and I'll just use the mental health as an example, if that's one of our issues or challenges that we are going to address, or say that we want to address, then they're going to scan the universe, if you will, to say, are there others out there? Maybe it's in Arizona, maybe it's in Florida, that are doing something similar to this, and can we steal from them in terms of the questions that they're asking, or the data they're collecting and so forth? So, they're doing that piece as well.
It sounds like a great idea. I was just trying to sort of put my, my head around how this is organized as an organization. Who's going to chair the meetings? Is there a governing board? Has anyone rappled with those?
Well, it's a collaborative association, I mean, of like-minded communities trying to do this. It's a self-governing.
At this point, it is. My hope is, is that we will become more formalized. We did talk about creating bylaws and so forth, but up until we had that special meeting, there was only four communities that had expressed interest in doing performance measurement. And, you know, I don't want to necessarily throw my colleagues under the bus, but local governments and municipal governments don't do a very good job in this area for a whole host of reasons. They're just not geared up like the private sector to collect data, to analyze data, to make decisions based on data. And so, when we've reached out for the last 15-plus months to various groups, they've indicated some interest in participating. And, I mean, Lake County was an early participant, was very interested. They actually had a department on performance measurement that now no longer exists, and so the county then pulled out. And we had that sort of experience of communities would be in, then communities would go out. And so, it's been frustrating, and I think that's why we said, let's not get wrapped up in setting up bylaws and getting the structure in place, because this may fall apart in a year or two, and if it does, you know, then we all go our separate ways. But if we can build that momentum, hopefully, year two or three, we will be in a position of creating a formal structure.
Yeah, I think, I'm, well, I guess, you know, as you say, we do this in business. There's a lot of complex questions out there, and more and more in modern life, where we have these tools and methods and practices to use actual data, and there are ways to track it and harvest it and harness it, and it's always now really the starting point, you know, really helps to find even what the question is. And so, I applaud this. I think this is a step in the right direction, and I hasten to add that, you know, here goes Lake Forest again, you know, and their leadership, whether in municipal government and so many other things, that we step forward to do, and yeah, we're stepping up to fund this until we get reimbursed and that kind of thing, but I'm learning more and more. There probably aren't 10 communities in the state that would sort of take this kind of leadership role. So, having said Lake Forest, of course, I really, in this case, mean the city staff. This is, I think, a testimony to the visioning and the long-range thinking and the planning and organizing and budgeting and fact-based management that our city has used over many years. When I was on, I mean, one data point, when I was on council 20 years ago, there were 252 full-time employees of the city, and today, there are 209. And it didn't come from sitting around waiting for something to happen. And so, I commend you, Bob, in particular, for the leadership of doing something that's going to help an awful lot of citizens far beyond Lake Forest.
Of course, yeah.
So, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an agreement in substantially the form attached here to the University of Illinois Chicago in the amount of $63,594.47 to provide data and benchmarking administrative support to the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative. You've got to come up with a better... Do I have a motion?
Moved.
The second?
Second.
Thank you. And the city clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Sorry. Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Any additional items for council discussion this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Got that second. We're done. Thank you.